We're on.
Welcome to the Ware, August 10th, Land Board Meeting. Our board's chairman has taken ill, so I'm filling in for him tonight. The agenda. We may as well do this conceptual review for Gary Remillard first, his first new agenda. I'll point you on the board member.
Okay.
Please pray.
And there's another conceptual when you're done with this one.
This is...
I can't see them last name. I've got the place off, right?
Yeah.
For a completely new site.
No, that's not them, but you have them over there.
I'm thinking I don't have enough copies.
Well, they all have little copies.
Okay.
Little itty-bitty.
All right. We did a site plan for Gary back in September, October of, what, 2016? And you had approved the five-unit building on his existing map, 412 lot 202. He has since purchased the abutting lot, 412, 205. What he'd like to do is cut the house off.
Which one is 205?
It's the one to the east. It butts the river.
Yes.
And that is a nine and a half acre lot. And he'd like to cut off the house and then absorb 7.47 acres with map 412 lot 202. And then construct, at this point, conceptually, three multi-tenant buildings. And then condo, commercial condo probably from the form of ownership, the buildings. Or individual units, you can buy one building, with all the units, you can buy one unit in one building. I'm not quite sure how we would do all that. We looked at coming out onto North Riverdale Road with a new road and doing a fully commercial subdivision with three lots. Unfortunately, with setbacks, you could probably do that, maybe obtain some waivers and some variances. But the roadway would end up having to be directly across the street from the house on map 412 lot 213 on the south side of North Riverdale Road. And we felt that that would not be just a good situation for the neighborhood. This way, Gary could construct the commercial buildings on the commercial, the larger section of the commercial property and providing a really good buffer off of Riverdale Road and from the neighbors on Riverdale Road. Out of the floodplain, we've shown the shoreline. We can meet all the shoreline setbacks and the minimum percentages of coverage to maintain the woodland buffer and the like. Just want to get some input from the board, if you see any major hang-ups for developing a commercial property.
With the existing structures on that proposed north lot, does the lot also empower condo development or would they remain?
I think if we're going to condo the new buildings, we would just condo everything.
Definitely, I think that's what we're doing.
Everything, yeah, we would involve everything on the condo.
Yeah.
And he can retain, you know, ownership of whatever units he desires.
Right.
And then, you know, sell the rest.
Is there anybody living in the house now?
I do not know that.
I know the commercial lot sizing is two acres.
Well, I've got a letter from Chip that says that whole parcel is owned commercial. So...
No, I don't doubt that.
I'm not sure where you're going, but...
Well, where I'm going with it is... If the house in the commercial zone is not occupied for how long, then is it not occupiable again as a house?
That's a question. That would be a question for Phil Drescher. I think you're alluding to abandonment.
Well, it's lots of the grandfather clause, it's really not abandonment. Because its grandfather's residential in the commercial zone.
Yeah, and it stays a residence in a commercial zone unless the house is torn down, and then it's just a commercial zone. But if no one lives in it, that is abandonment. Hard thing to prove if someone is still paying taxes on it, by my perspective. There is a house down there that is occupied. It is out at the very, I think, the very northern end of the lot. And there's a driveway that runs in there.
Oh, it's the one behind.
Oh, the turrell piece, yeah.
Yeah, right through the middle of this.
Yeah.
And also that on your site plan, you show an existing driveway. The driveway is now a road. It's a private road, Oil Mill Road.
Oh, so it has a 911 name?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that's to your advantage or not.
I would think not.
Where are you talking about?
The driveway going into that complex down on Riverdale?
Yep.
It showed us a driveway on these plans when...
Common access drive there?
Yeah, when Mr. Remillard put the fourth unit in down there, the fourth building, it became a private road. It has a 911 address, it's called Oil Mill Road.
Okay. Yeah, that should be shown on the plan.
What are the requirements for acreage if you're selling condominiums?
Well, it's commercial, and you would have to follow under the DES lot sizing.
It says two acres. Does that mean you have 10 condos, you need 20 acres?
No. No, you don't have soil-based lot sizing for it.
But in residential, we do.
Yeah.
So if you were doing this in residential, you would need X number of acres, whatever the...
Per unit, yeah.
Per unit?
Yeah.
And I thought that also applied to...
Yeah, but there's no limit on the number of businesses, units, that can be on a commercial lot. Like there's residential where there's only one...
As long as you meet the setbacks, I think you can put as many buildings on it as you want.
And we address the coverage because it's an aquifer.
Because you're not really increasing, you're increasing the tax base, but you're not increasing the number of people that affect the tax base. Nobody stays there, they all go home.
No single residential unit or commercial unit limitation in the commercial lot.
Well, as long as you don't exceed your coverages.
Right.
So not more than 50% of the area is occupied by a building or structure, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm not that familiar with this entire process, but I'm looking at this and where your proposed access is from the existing lot to the new proposed one, it looks like there's an existing gravel access drive that crosses it.
Correct. Yep.
How's that going to be affected by this? Is it going to be affected by this?
We're going to tune up the grading on that driveway.
And do you have to get permission from lot 203's owner to do this?
I'm not sure, because we're not moving the easement, and we're not going to impede their ability to use it, just going to regrade it.
Is that actively used?
Yes.
It's the access for 203?
Correct.
Is there a now, is it quite a slope, should I have to use that driveway?
Okay, so now you're going to have two driveways intersecting each other with what form of traffic control?
Well, that's a single-family residence, and it's wide open as can be.
Okay.
And there, the top of the hill where the solidly boundary of 203 meets lot 202 is a high point, and you can see from there to, unimpeded, to Riverdale Road.
Okay.
So it's...
Aren't there power lines there?
Yep, that's under the power lines.
Yes.
That driveway's under the power lines.
And right now, the existing gravel access drive, the 203, does that go directly to North Riverdale Road?
Yes.
I don't see it shown. Am I missing something?
Well, that's not on our property, that actually crosses over the Public Service Company, New Hampshire property there.
I see.
We do know where it comes out, and we can show it, I just didn't, for the purpose of this plan, it's just not shown.
Looks to preclude them from using new road or the condo units using that driveway.
Well, the condo units would not have any rights of access of a Public Service Company land. That right-of-way to 412, 203 existed long before Public Service Company, New Hampshire, purchased that rectangle out front. So their rights are superior for their access.
What stops Joe Public from using it?
It's private, it's a private driveway.
The idea is there's going to be a condominium association which is going to maintain the property, follow the roads in the winter, make sure the tar, the paved areas are paved when it has to be done?
Yeah, there would be, yeah, a condo association would have to be set up and recorded. Commercial condos don't have to go through the AG's office, just have to be set up properly and recorded.
Is this the first commercial condo in town?
No, Langtots, Langtots was a commercial condo.
That's a condo?
I believe so.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it was, I don't know how much of that they've been doing.
That's how they got to be able to...
Yeah, but it's still a condominium.
Was it?
Yeah.
I'm looking to find the, I guess it's the western boundary of 202, where it intersects with that existing building at the top of the plan, looks as though it cuts off some of the parking places.
Yeah.
Is that the line?
Yeah.
That cuts off one of the parking places?
I'm not following it.
Is this, is this the property line for 202?
Yes, correct.
It looks as though...
Oh, there's an agreement, there's a joint access agreement between this building, this one, and this one. Gary Remillard built this building also, this old, one of his friends, he sold it to him, sheet metal, which is now being placed. But there's a joint access and use agreement from long ago in place.
Is that going to be affected by a potential increase in traffic?
No.
Why no? If you're putting up, how many units, five, 10, 15? New units, right?
Yep.
And there are, let's see, on his, on his new building, I don't know how many there are.
We don't, we don't take away any spaces at all.
I'm not speaking about parking places, I'm talking about traffic.
I guess that depends on how many tenants there are in those buildings.
Assume there's one tenant in each of the units, so that's 15, 10, I'm assuming that, because that's what you said was a possibility in the condo.
That is a possibility. Well, I think that we would be prepared to address access and traffic numbers, at least preliminarily, for if we make the formal submittal.
I think we'd also, I think we'd need something on that, we'd also need a copy of the proposed condominium...
Yep.
...association or common agreement, common area agreement.
Approved by the town attorney.
After we get it, yeah.
You'll notice there's access around all the buildings.
What kind of vegetation is on this property now and also along that steep slope where the proposed access goes?
The upper section outside of the protected shoreline area has been cleared, was cleared maybe three, four months ago. But the entire shoreline area is still, that was untouched.
Where's the shoreline area?
Anything within 250 feet of the edge of the river is still heavily wooded.
So he's going to put his building into the shoreline area?
Well, within, yes, you can. You can't put any structures within 50 feet of the river. And then the area between the 50-foot primary structure setback line and 150-foot natural woodland buffer line, 35% of that area has to remain in a natural state, has untouched in perpetuity. Then there...
Putting a drainage area?
Then there...
That's not untouched?
No.
Well, no, no, 35% has to remain untouched. The other 65% can be developed. So we've shown the hashed area with the 35-foot, a contiguous strip would be along the edge of the river outside the 50-foot setback line. You can construct within the 250-foot protective shoreline area, but there are restrictions and there are requirements that you have to meet. Site-specific permit, heavy, heavy drainage treatment in onsite storage, which, this is a group one soil, it's all gravel. I don't really anticipate any problems with a design in achieving those goals set forth in the shoreline rules. Because we have lots and lots of area to work with. We're not really constrained by, you know, really, really tight set... Yes, this would serve you to trigger a site-specific condition. Because we're going to disturb more than 50...
Mike on that house lot?
Yep.
Why the particular configuration?
To make it two acres, to conform with the zoning.
But why did you give them access to the river as opposed to something else? Was that intentional for some reason?
Well, because the lot has access on the river now, as it's currently configured. And we just thought it would be nice to...
From the second here?
Give them a little bit.
That's a good thing.
This, well, this, it's on the lot line here, but this tail here, that you can tell, is pretty much useless to these guys.
It's useless to the commercials, to the commercial property. But if you can sell a lot that has 50, you know, 57 feet of river frontage, it's attractive to somebody.
Is there a problem that you're building commercial buildings over an aquifer and these are rented to people who use chemicals or gasoline, diesel?
You can...
I'm going to put some conditions on the plan.
You can put those conditions on the plan, and I believe the aquifer protection overlay district gives you, gives you that authority. So, without going into particulars of what, I don't know who's going to occupy these, but...
Is the entire, excluding this newly acquired piece, is the existing piece over the aquifer?
Yes. The whole, the whole area is.
I'm not that familiar with this particular part of, this particular complex. Is there any signs that are going to be, have to be erected on, what was it, Oil Mill Road is the name of this?
Oil Mill Road.
Oil Mill Road that will advertise for the proposed 15 lots?
15 units.
15 units, excuse me.
I don't want someone to think we're putting 15 lots.
No, sorry.
I would imagine they're going to have to do something with signage. We haven't really, honestly, haven't gotten that far along yet.
Signs by the other 114, okay?
No, the sign's on North Riverdale, right now, is a sign.
No, there are no signs on 114.
Right, but I mean, yeah, okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
But they don't own, Remillard doesn't own that, so he couldn't put a sign there anywhere.
No. No.
Who owns the private road?
My client owns, he owns the private, he owns the fee under the road.
Okay.
The Turrells, who own map 412 lot 203, they have the rights to pass and repass.
I'm just thinking in terms of...
Oh, which road are you talking about?
I'm sorry, existing paved common access drive.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oil Mill.
I was talking about the...
Yeah, I got confused, I apologize. That road is owned by 412, 20, was it 201? But there's, again, there's a joint access agreement.
And the access agreement allows him to increase the traffic by increasing development?
Yeah.
I think we should have a copy of that.
Oh, yeah, we are following some middles, we'll get you copies and everything.
So none of this, none of these three buildings will be visible from off-site?
Not really. They are going to be in a hole, they're going to be...
What about noise and hours of operation? We had some complaints from neighbors when Mr. Remillard was proposing this new...
That's part of the site claim review process, and if those complaints continue and the board sees it, then they can impose certain restrictions. I'm pretty sure that when we make our final submittal, this room will be followed. It will be followed. So you'll, we'll get everything out on the table and hash it out.
Are you looking to complete by the end of this year?
I would think that would be complete by the end of next construction phase. Quite a bit of infrastructure that would have to be done, regrading the lot, drainage etc. Because in the shoreline rules, all the drainage has to go, and the vegetation has to be established. You know, you can start putting domes up, you're not going to be able to get an occupancy permit if it's not done, and I mean 100% done.
This, and there will be some assurance that whatever goes into the drainage areas will be just drinkable water, rainwater, in other words?
I don't know if I want to drink what's coming out of any pavement, but...
But it's not something that's going to be wastewater?
Again, that would go back to the aquifer protection district, what you can allow on-site, what this zoning ordinance says.
Will it pave those parking lots?
I would think so.
Yeah.
I would think so. That paved parking lot allows that water to get into treatment better without a lot of erosion and siltation. If it's done properly.
Are you going to do this all at once, or are you going to do one building at a time, like a phase step thing?
I think the entire lot's going to be graded at once, give it time.
You might do one building at a time, get it, block size, and do another one?
We really haven't talked about that, you know, in terms of schedule. I think if there was a demand, we'd probably put them all up as fast as we could. I don't think you would put three up at the same time, but I think they might go in quick succession.
Mike, on the, well, let's look at the proposed driveway, okay, just to the right of it, those apparently are elevation, the solid lines.
Yep.
When Remillard got the, check it, the dashed line?
The solid lines are proposed contours.
Yeah.
The dashed lines are existing.
Oh, that right.
Yeah, we did a full, full boundary and topographic survey on 412, 205, and we blended that in with all the survey work that we've done over the years on 412, 202.
So there's going to be a lot of material removed on that?
Yes, there is.
You're going to...
Well, you got to make, you got to make a flat pad.
I understand. You're going to get utility companies to put taller poles on there?
That's, that's our next quest, because we got to speak to public service.
Two poles, they're going to be highly impacted.
Yep. Where there's a will, there's a way.
Looking at the, I guess, the proposed buildings, I'm assuming that the intention is something of like a garage or something along those lines, or...
I'm not quite sure that they would all be full up with mechanics or anything like that.
Okay.
I know there's, I think there's one or two down, I think there's a crane company in the new building. I think they're going to take over pretty much the whole building. So that's fairly low impact. I know in the existing building, the L-shaped building, there's at least one mechanic and a repair place. And Gary rebuilt and sells construction equipment. So I honestly don't know what is in the rest of the buildings, but, you know, the units, I should say. But again, whatever he proposed, whatever goes in has to comply with the underlying zone, which we can clearly spell out on the plan.
Are you, did Mr. Remillard remove all of the equipment that was supposed to be removed?
His son, that was his son's equipment, and it is all gone.
It's in Hennecker as we speak.
In the aquifer protection zone, no more than 10% of a single lot, including et cetera, et cetera, may be rendered impervious to infiltration. Do you meet that?
Less.
Maximum lot coverage may be increased through the issuance of a conditional use permit. So you're going to require a conditional use permit?
Yep.
And what are the criteria?
Usually no degradation of water and property values and whatever. Basically, the position of the town's always been, we have to treat the drainage, pre-imposed. So all of our design work in drainage design would do just that. And then, because we're constructing in the protected shoreline, this also goes to DES foreview. So their drainage design... Yeah, it's a belt and suspenders type of design up at the DES involved.
Is it, let's assume that they get approval, and then they want to put in subsequently a commercial compost facility, which requires a conditional use. Can we grant a conditional use subsequent to the approval of the...
Because in the aquifer zone, hold on. Take a good look at what we have listed as commercial uses in our zone, and exclude some of them as being overgrown there.
So we could exclude all of these?
Yes.
He already has the, has already purchased this lot, correct?
He owns it.
I think, are there also any questions?
So what percentage is going to be paved or impervious?
Neil, I haven't calculated that.
Are we talking about 50%?
I don't think it would be any more than that, just by eye, what I know is on-site now. Part will be about 50%. Maybe less. I'll be honest with you. I threw this together in about three or four hours. Just looking at the grades and building locations and parking and septic areas. We may be able to tighten all that up because pavement's expensive and really make it, I don't wanna say a tight site, but make it so that it flows with a minimal amount of coverage.
Yes.
Sounds right.
Is there room for more units in there?
There might be.
Yeah?
It depends on what will fly and what, you know, what my client needs to get out of it. There's a serious lack of commercial property in town. That's buildable anyways.
Has he sold all of the units in the new building? Or, I excuse them, are all of them occupied?
I believe they are all occupied, yes.
Anything vacant?
I don't know. All right, thank you. Want me to stay up here?
If they so desire. I don't see anyone for the stones on the driveway, so you can forget that one.
What was Mike's next subject?
Either Mike again for Jerry Haynes or Art for his explanation of... You may as well finish Mike, it probably only gonna take a minute.
This one's actually really simple and I think I know the answer. Jerry Haynes, Haynes Mulch on B and B Lane, map 411, lot 194, wants to put the 30 by 60 addition on the back of his existing building, which if you remember, we did a lot line adjustment, I don't know, a year and a half ago or so, where he picked up 45 acres from the old Daniel stand, from JMC, Mike and Chuck Brown, and...
That's parcel A?
Yep. So now, his map 411, lot 194 is a total of 48.9 acres. And he wants to put up an 1,800 square foot addition. And I think the site plan rules say 1,500 square feet or less, or less than 10% is two different numbers. This came in at the last second to Chip and to me. And you'll notice on my title block, I printed it out so quickly, I kinda went over the border with one of the letters, so...
And my reason for bringing it in here was to make sure that he did or did not need a formal site plan for this building?
We do have an approved site plan already, so I think we can come in under an amended site plan. I'm just not sure if it could be, but I...
Is this, is this addition going to be completely enclosed or is it open?
No, it's a 30 by 60 enclosed addition to the back of his building.
And he's gonna put his conveyors and other equipment in there?
It's for storage or for doing stuff?
Honestly, I got a text from him.
Oh.
He came up and filled out the paperwork before he went on vacation and that was honored two days ago and I'm here in front of you right now.
So what are the issues that you think are problematic?
I don't think he has any issues from the site plan. As we meet all the setbacks, we're way, way under the threshold for coverages. Run him a flagpole, I guess, and make sure that you don't see, think that's a big deal and just try to move it forward.
Is it gonna be a concrete floor?
Yeah, I think so.
Or paved or something, it's not gonna be dirt?
No, it's not gonna be dirt.
And it's just for storage?
That I don't know, however I can, so... I would imagine he would like to get somebody to put it under power so he could, um...
The things he produce are all stored outside, so I would think it would only be equipment that he's putting in there. And one of the things he said in his application was got an exceptionally large conveyor that he wants to get inside.
He's gotta do his amended site plan.
Yeah, just come in for amended. And that's fairly basic, I mean, we already have everything on the other site plan. Just update your butters and coverages and everything. Because he's not adding employees, he's just basically putting storage space, so everything else is good.
What's the next thing?
I think, I think the butters should be notified.
Well, they have to be.
Yeah, they have to be notified on the amended. At the whole new site plan application, amended site plan.
I don't have a problem with that. And we got the authority to do that.
Well, these are all non-binding anyway, we're just letting him know whether he wants to come back and what he's doing back for.
Do we have the legal authority to amend a site plan?
Yeah.
And it's not a new one?
No, it's not a new one, it's a revised site plan.
If he didn't have a current approval, you can make him do a whole new site plan. But he does have a fairly recent...
And he's only adding a little bit to his operation.
He's not adding office space, his parking requirements aren't real good enough. It actually, since then he's added 45 acres to the lot, so his lot coverage is no one either.
When you figure coverage, do you include the lake?
No. It's not impervious. It takes water and...
I would, I would not include the lake in my calculations. I think that would go against the underlying principles of the ordinance.
Okay.
But he still got...
Can we do that quickly? Or is there some expedited...
Well, not tonight.
No.
No, you had, basically, the process that you have to go through takes almost the same amount of time as doing a full-blown site plan. There's just less paperwork involved in it, you still have to notify all the butters, all, the majority of all the things you would need to do for a full-blown site plan, except you won't need to do the contours, you won't need to do some of the...
But we have all, that's already done on an approved plan, so we would have the approval numbers, add the contours, have a second sheet as a bloat, the detail of the law, the addition...
Like dealt wetlands with care?
Yeah, to conform to your, what is in the site plan regs, basically, in the checklist.
But we can do it on an expedited basis, I'm looking at pages eight and nine. Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Roof line and so forth, it could follow the same as the existing building?
I would think so. Probably, probably just a little bit last maybe. Well, we'll show details for all. All right, thank you.
Next man and again, Mr. Cicelyano.
So Craig asked, I turned in the Mylar and print that you approved. So, the line that I had, I found a corner, a ring of stones here, and I connected... The plan we approved is this line connecting this.
The line that we...
Did you say a ring of stones?
Yeah. Well, around the case of corner, it's something we thought that I could do. Anyway, while they were going to set these, this thing, we found a pin here that is similar. From the pin here, it is similar to this one. So, and now that line hits that wall that I did use when it hit here, now the line goes through the wall, through this pin, and intersected this line from down here to the ring of stones. So the difference between the other plan and this one is this little circle.
What's the significance of the pin?
Well, that indicates the, well, I'm assuming it indicates this line. You have to make some assumptions here and there.
Is this something that happens frequently? Pins that were missed or discovered?
No, we try not to.
So I'm confused as to the purpose of this thing.
Well, what happened, we approved the plan with bearings and distances on those real lot lines and it actually affects the lengths of the sidelines and everything because the other line is back, back and forth over a couple of feet.
So is that meaning he has to reset all the pins on that edge?
No, I'd reset, no, I've set them up. What I've said and what I've submitted is what everybody's said.
But the problem Craig had, which is legitimate, it's a problem, is the Mylar that he brought in was different than the plan we approved.
Okay.
Because he made changes after he found those details.
Okay.
He amended the Mylar to match what he found, which is not what we approved.
So what do we have to, what is he asking us to do then?
I think he's asking us to approve the Mylar that he submitted.
Except for this, the Mylar is identical to what we approved, all of the conditions, all of the language, all of the dates.
Oh, yeah.
But you have changed some of the lengths of lines for...
Wouldn't that, that would also affect the squared footage of the lot?
Yeah, it actually would have made them smaller a little bit. But it's still no one near significant.
It doesn't affect the intent of the plan.
And I, I don't, I don't know, just before I, before I would vote on it, I just wanna understand all the different ramifications, because I've never done this, this big a report. So is this an increase in...
No, it's actually decrease in a lot areas, I think.
Okay. By, by feet or by tens of feet, or...
Well, they all get affected a little bit different because it's a fragment.
No, but at the, how, at the thickest point, how thick is that sliver that you're now moving?
I think it's 15 feet. Do I have a distance on there?
12.3 feet is somewhere.
12.3.
12.3.
And the other corner is the same, so it tapers from zero to 12.3 feet.
Correct.
So there was an IRS, that's a...
Iron rod.
That's an iron rod, ring of stones, and then there's another...
Well, I set that as the corner.
Oh, that one you set?
Yes.
It's the one next to it that he found.
The one to the right?
Yep. That he hadn't found previously.
Yeah, well, how does that have anything to do with this little additional sliver?
So, the new iron pin that you found and the ring of stones are consistent?
No, 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 these two pins, these two pins, that one and this one are consistent, they have a square head. A square top.
But the ring of stones is what you used to make the line?
To create this line.
Oh, not, not the back lot?
And I found the barbed wire up here too. So, this line here, I lined it on this ring of stones and the barbed wire.
But you're not changing the sideline?
No, I didn't change it.
This is, this is a technical correction.
Exactly.
So what's the process for doing that?
I'm not sure.
I think you have to vote to accept the new Mylar or make them go out and set the pins where they originally were.
We don't wanna do that because...
But I'm not gonna do that.
But he is a surveyor, is saying that, what he's saying here is what he thinks the lot line is. Right?
Yeah.
And since the new change doesn't affect anything that the board has approved...
No, so you just need to make a motion to accept it as presented or as corrected. Somebody needs to second it, vote on it, and send them home.
And what would the reference be? Subdivision plan, tax lot, et cetera, all of this language?
Was it, was it previously approved, what they...
You've got the Mylar and the minutes of the meeting right there.
Somebody wanted to make a motion, we wanted to have the same exact, reference these minutes on June 8th conditions.
So you're saying that the iron pin found, the line runs to the ring of stones?
No, it did. Well, he did this on June 8th.
Yep.
But then he found that new pin.
Does this kind of a amendment need, do a butters need to be notified with this? Because it is a change of a lot line? Well, unintentional, but...
Really changing?
I'm not sure, we've been in your books here before.
I don't know, I don't think there were either.
No, there weren't.
Let's assume, Art, that in a subsequent survey, 30 years or 50 years from today, the determination is made that the original ring of stones line is the correct one and not that iron pin that you found.
Somebody's not gonna be doing it.
No, you're gone and we're all gone. In other words, what, what happens when a surveying error is discovered many, many years after the survey was made?
It gets corrected, somebody else determines it somewhere else.
Or it goes to court. A boundary dispute is actually only a disagreement between two surveyors. So you can have a boundary disagreement with your neighbor, but it's not legal till two surveyors disagree on that point. So in 50 years, if somebody went out and surveyed that and the two surveyors disagreed, they would end up going to court and someone would straighten it out.
And, I mean, the people that buy these lots, you know, wants the lots and their houses on whatever, their lot lines are those pins that are set. The only one that would ever dispute it would be, what, the State of the Land here, is that, Towne Wair?
In the back?
Yeah.
Towne Wair.
Towne Wair.
Which is highly unlikely, right?
Right.
Well, the stone wall ended up, you know, lining up with it. Again, I had it, I had the line going from here and missed the stone wall. So using this pin, stone, it's a pretty straight line.
Yeah, but that would look like the line it should be, is the solid line.
Yeah.
You're saying it really should be the...
No.
Oh, it's one of the first way. Okay, all right, now it's all coming to me.
I've corrected it to the...
Is this correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah. Is, there's no date on this?
Yeah, there is.
It says revised May 2017, March 17th, July 24th. So July 24th is the date?
Usually the last day.
Okay. I'm moved that we approve the change in the back lot line of subdivision plan for tax lot 41057 for GM Investment Properties, as shown on the survey dated July 24th, 2017.
That one looks, is that one still? I'll say, second, second by Tom, fall in favor?
Aye.
Any discussions?
Too late now, we don't really know.
Thank you. Thank you. Well done.
So now Craig can sign.
I'll mail that tomorrow, Art.
He put the Mylar here also.
Leave that for Bruce to sign. He gets the cover for our sickbay commando.
Next. Higginson is not here yet.
Item.
Did he need to be here for this, or did he, or did the selectmen just require, request our?
He did not, he did not appear before the selectmen. And he was on the docket, but he did not appear because he was sick. And at that time, the selectmen, I believe, and Tom would verify this, sent it back to the planning board for a review.
Because there was a question as to where it was on Rockland, right?
Well, it's had it.
But he should still be here.
I know when it was suggested we send it back to the planning board because we were stuck. Normally, any of these stone wall rules just go through as a matter of course. This one was brought up and two members voted against it, two members voted for it, and one member abstained because of relationship of person, of business relationship, I guess, with the person who was proposing. So. I didn't see a reason why that it was being objected to, except for one of the board members said he thought it was too close to, the new guideline was too close to Merrill Road. So I thought, go back here, review it, define whatever the requirements are. I spoke to Chip earlier today, and actually, there are no specific requirements, he said, as far as the distance and intersection of Merrill Road. And some of the other things that Chip, that yesterday, the day we didn't talk, was that it had gone through zoning and actually the new location was an improvement because it moved it further away from the wetlands.
Yeah. And closed up the other access.
Yeah, and it actually was, did you say that it's actually further from Merrill Road in the other access?
No. Well, there were several proposed driveways. The one now is further from Merrill Road, but not the original driveway. The original driveway actually impacts the wetland, which is why they couldn't use it. So.
It's about halfway between both of them, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it actually, it's closer to Route 77 Merrill Road.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's still further down from Merrill Road, away from 77. They've got it as far away from 77 as they can get it.
Right, no, it's simply where if you miss the buckle, you can't move on more because without impact of the wetland, which is.
Do, do we have a copy of that application before us, and then we could find out with Tom what we need?
It's in the minutes of your last meeting, if you read them.
I did not read those minutes. But I thought when he made his presentation, in addition to some photographs, he had some sort of a map that showed where the new driveway was going to be and where the stones from that were going to be put.
Yep.
We don't have that?
Of course we have it. I was just testing, testing your remembering capabilities.
What I think we ought to do is, is to discuss this in a way that gives the board the information that they're looking for, or at least the two people who voted against it could get additional information, so that they might reconsider their decision.
Does that have a schedule of the? ZVA?
Uh, no, see, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Okay, okay. Well.
I thought you were just testing the EMT and speedy ambulance service.
Uh, no, I do not have it, because the application went up to the selectmen and it did not come back. With the driveway on it. This, I think, is Walker Hill.
Yeah, pictures you had of Walker Hill.
Yeah. Route 77, Walker Hill.
Oh. I guess what I'm looking for is being able to say, there is no criteria for that.
If I remember right, the public works director had input on this, and he said, if I remember right, I think the conversation was something along the lines of, the new proposed driveway is a better, better site than the original proposed driveway.
Correct.
And I don't remember if Florida Fire Works had any input on that.
Here's the application, and here is the driveway. And it shows where Merrill Road is located.
But the new proposed one is further down from Merrill Road, further away from Merrill Road.
But my understanding is that this is simply the removal and replacement of rocks.
Rocks.
And that the driveway permit process would be separate from that, and it has nothing to do with board selectmen.
No, and the driveway, the driveway's already been approved. The driveway has already been approved.
In that location.
In that location. It's just moving the rocks, which it seems like some of the marble heads that we deal with here do not understand.
What happened?
It's televised, anyways.
Did, did the board have a copy of this, Tom?
Uh, no, because nobody really came in. I don't, I.
Yeah, that, they shouldn't actually have talked about it, because Dan Higginson had scheduled himself to be there, and he was sick and did not come. And Naomi brought this up, because it was on the agenda. And because it was on the agenda, they voted on it.
Probably because he could show up on Monday.
But I think also if the board actually saw where this was going to be, do we have a copy of where it originally was, so they could see how this approves things?
We probably have the site plan that they had presented.
Yeah. Actually, all that stuff went to the source.
Why did she even mail me on Monday and have the, have it in the meeting, case of that's becoming that?
Is this your Walker Hill road?
Just along.
Give me that back. I have too many things in my file. I'm starting to think.
Well, they didn't show the original request. That's what I'm thinking, Chuck. If you kind of showed some dotted lines here where it was originally. Right, if the plan was approved, I don't. Originally, it was right next to this culvert. It was right here. Remember the culvert was right beside it? So it was like rather with plus on, further north.
Yeah, the zoning board went through this rather extensively. Let me see what I have here. Yeah, this is, I think it's the same thing.
You see it pulled it quite straight.
Access to be eliminated?
Yeah, just. Yeah, that was the part of the variance.
Yeah, this is the new driveway. This is the old driveway.
That's right, because there's the culvert.
Right.
They're taking the old driveway out of the, out of the wetland, and moving the stones down to block that driveway in.
Show the culvert, it's a contour line. You haven't shown the culvert on here.
I think the key here, though, is that that driveway permit is already been approved in this location.
Yep.
Which means all the necessary criteria had to have been followed in order to be approved.
Yep.
So that narrows this down to simply approving the removal of rocks.
Right. And it's not just the removal.
Then replacement.
And, but they're being replaced so that the wall will continue to be where it was in the same form that it was, except the entry will be at a different point.
Yeah. That really wasn't the concern. The concern was the location. But we really, or it's likely to have no say on that.
But they, they could certainly say, based on some criteria dealing with aesthetics, that they don't want the driveway.
But then it goes back to the zoning board on administrative appeal.
From the selected?
From the, from anybody. The zoning board is the ultimate authority.
How?
Any decision made by the, by the planning board or the board of selectmen that you question.
Yep.
Has to go through the zoning board.
Okay. But it still has to come back. This, this stone wall thing.
Well, now it has to go back to you guys, because you didn't vote on it in the first place.
Right. But if, no one else can make that decision, correct?
No, it's you.
Yeah. Those are, and that's the only piece that we really have to decide on.
Okay.
See what happens.
Does this help you in some way?
Well, I, it helps that I know that the driveway has already been approved. We have a process for driveway approval, and this has already been approved. Last meeting, I didn't know that.
And you can also point out, if you show them this to this, that the new location of the approved driveway is further, farther from Merrill Road than the original.
Than the original proposal, not the, not the original opening.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, the original opening was down here.
It ran right across the piece of land.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on.
I'm glad that's all.
Okay. Anything else I had agenda? So we have an agenda, right?
You can review the minutes, and let's go home.
We really need to finish April. We've been getting nasty emails about that.
Did you?
I'm looking at it right now.
Do you?
I'm looking at it right now.
I didn't find anything on that. I went through.
Who's the we who have been getting nasty emails?
All of us.
I haven't gotten any.
I haven't gotten any.
I believe somebody sent an email out this eve, this evening about it.
How was it nasty?
Okay, stern reminders.
The only question I had is in that second bullet, what is capital A, small o, T, C?
Alteration of terrain?
Should be all capitals.
I figured the O was lowercase.
No. AOT.
That's the only change I had. Thank you. Fine job. Thank you.
Most unable. Twenty-seven minutes? Move for Bruce.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Apologize, or sentence, Chuck abstained?
I did.
So we're finished with stern emails? Is that the idea?
Twenty-seven?
I haven't looked through it yet, but I have it in front of me.
Who, who made that motion? Was it Mr.?
Clyde.
Um, do we need to do something with Knox?
That's your homework. You guys are starting to get a breaks here on your meetings, and the zoning board is just stacked up.
Yeah, I didn't find anything. I thought they skipped their August meeting.
They did. Skipped July, skipped June.
That's fantastic.
Look at all the money we saved. I can buy new paper clips.
Make the change, paper clip change.
Neil takes them home.
Anybody else look at July 27?
I'm having a bit of this one.
And while you're looking at it, you can sign these.
Somebody needs to help me out on the July 13. It says through the binary course of hot bituminous pavement. Is binary the right word?
Binder coat.
It should be binder.
Binder.
Yes.
July 13?
July 13?
Yeah. This is under A, the third line, the fourth line.
Is that the draft copy you have, or is that a?
Draft minutes.
On the 13th? Those are probably been finalized.
We did those.
Oh, we did? Never mind.
We did those last minute.
We were on vacation.
And it was changed through the binder course of hot.
Great.
Anybody make more than a July 27 minutes?
I make a motion, we have the heads of July 27, 2017, as written.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steen?
Steen.
Don't sentence, call in.
Oh, I'll vote for him. Do we?
So is that 320, 302?
302. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.